Good evening, everybody. June, are all board members present at this time?
Um, I can't see everyone. Lori, can you see everyone on your end?
I'll scroll through the list. Hi, this is Kelly. I believe we have everybody. I'm trying to scroll as well. Yes. We have everybody. Mrs. Mueller, are we okay to begin? Has everybody been in bed in?
Yes, everyone's in.
Okay. Okay, so the regular monthly board meeting of the Amberberry School District Board of Directors on Wednesday, January 19, 2022 is now called to order. This is Mueller. Would you? Perfect. And we will now rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States and to the Republic
For which it stands
one nation under the indivisible with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It may or it may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Seifus?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgoe?
Here.
Mr. Keever?
You.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Zachi?
Here.
Mrs. Romasco?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Can I have the sunshine law, please?
Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, January 19 to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws, salary schedule, and labor relations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to accept or correct the minutes of Wednesday, December 8 reorganization meeting? Wednesday? I'm sorry, Wednesday, December 8, meet and discuss non-voting meeting and Wednesday, December 15 board meeting.
I move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report dated December 2021?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I forgot. I missed one. I'm sorry, Mrs. Mueller. Do we have any correspondence today?
There are no correspondence.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do not have any amendments or addendums to the agenda. Our recognition and presentation has been moved to February along with the students that were being that were going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so that will take place at the first February meeting. So we will now move on to public comment. The following was announced on the website and on the district Facebook page. I just need to pull up the actual comments. If you can give me one second, please. Public comment will only be taken in written format via email in advance of the meeting. Public comments received in advance will be circulated to the board. All public comments regarding agenda items will be read during the meeting. All other comments will be summarized during the meeting. All comments must include the resident and property owner's name and address. And public comments will be accepted via email up until 4 o'clock PM today, Wednesday, January 19. Mrs. Mueller, have you received any comments in advance of this meeting?
I have, and I'll go ahead and read those.
Thank you.
Michael Winnie, Bait M.P.A. In regards to the masking policy that is up for voting this evening, some members of this board ran on the platform of parental choice. Many people voted based on that concern. As has been voiced by many before, no matter what side of the masturbate you are on and what data comes out from either side, this should remain a choice for parents to make for their own households. Nicole Courage, Bait M.P.A. Could the board clarify if the district will be implementing online learning for snow day or using the snow days that are in the calendar for this year? Also, if online learning will occur, will snow days be built into the calendar for next year? Would you like me to read them all and then answer them?
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
Okay, Jordan Bullage, Harmony Township. Here we are again, another shutdown, more of our children being robbed from your decision from unlawful, unconstitutional, misguided guidelines. I have mentioned this before from masks that don't work and cause more harm and still trying to remove our freedoms as human being. Contact tracing does not work, sending children home just because of what-if scenarios, pushing online formats that do not teach is proving these conspiracies to be true. Everyone that tested positive can now be known as natural immunity counts. Look at what your school board members are doing. I'm calling all of you accountable for violating, again, our constitutional rights, civil rights, and failing your oath to office. My children are suffering mentally, physically, and educationally. Solicitor was wrong last time, no difference this time. I still haven't heard back from Mr. Turk, holding my passenger car door open when my son not allowing him until he puts his mask on, then threatens not to ban, then threatens to ban me from the Amberberry School District when I put everything together. It is showing you're choosing to disobey laws and the Constitution and choose evil. This is our children, not yours. This is up to parents, not board members. You're repeating history of 1933 Germany and oath to office you sworn to. Time to stop before you keep making it worse on us parents and our children, all children. Kristen Paxton Swickley, regarding the new proposed masking requirement that is on the agenda, I want to voice my strong support to continue the pro-choice policy that's currently in place. I'm opposed to instituting mandates of any kind. There is increasingly more evidence showing that loose-fitting cloth fast masks provide little to no benefit to where, to those near them. And in fact, can cause a host, can cause a host of other health issues. Even the CDC is walking back its previous claims of effectiveness. The choice should reside solely with the parent guardians and/or the students themselves. My high school daughter chooses not to wear one in school. My middle school daughter prefers to wear one. That's their choice and no one, that should, that should not be revoked by the school board. Heather Fernandez, Amber, PA. I understand it's hard to have all bases covered with surge of COVID. My concern is I feel kids should still be able to go to VOTEC. I understand your waiting line responses. If my child has been fully vaccinated and is not contact traced, why should these kids not be able to attend? My other concern is mistletoe dance change. A lot of our kids work some nights, may not be able to attend now. Will there be a refund? Also, if their date is not able to go because of the change, can they take someone to replace their squad? And that is all the comments that were sent in.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller.
You're welcome.
We'll just address those at this time and then move forward from there. So, Dr. Pasquarella, if you don't mind, could you speak to the snow days being utilized for this year? To that comment?
Yeah, so in the current calendar and in the the calendar that's up for, also up for adoption for the following year, we did include snow days in there. At the present time, it has been at one year at a time basis. And often, we don't find out till well after the calendar is adopted by the board as to whether the state will continue to allow us to use virtual learning platforms to count for snow days. They obviously let us utilize that during COVID and they agreed to allow us to utilize that even for snow days again this year. However, we won't know whether or not they will allow us to do that for the following year. So I think it's very important both for snow days and overall makeup days in case something were happened that we still build some snow days in. That being said, my intent and recommendation would be if we do run into snow days or other cancellations that we would in fact utilize if allowable by the state as it is in this year's calendar to use the the online platform to, to you know, to handle the education of the students on that day. So, to answer your question, it's a fluid object from the state. You find out much later after you've approved a calendar whether or not they'll grant that for the following year. So my recommendation is to leave them in there and to answer the question, if allowable, we most likely won't use them. We would use our online format. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. To the comment regarding the dance, the winter formal, I would suggest, because some of those are specific questions, individual questions, I would suggest, I know that Mrs. Neal at the high school is in charge of the winter formal. So if you would like to, if you have any questions regarding individual concerns with the winter formal, I would suggest emailing Mrs. Neal and then also Mrs. Zupsek as well, and I'm sure that they will, they will answer those questions. And just so everybody is aware, I was going to say this later on, but the winter formal has been rescheduled for next Saturday, January 29. Everything about the dance is staying the same, so the same location, same time, everything, it's just at a different date. So just for that information, but any other individual questions can be emailed. I believe we're going to be talking about a little bit more about the masking questions. And I think that was all from the we'll be talking about that under the voting items, but I think that was all from the comment. However, due to the emergency nature of the meeting having to be changed to virtual meeting at the last minute, we did advertise this obviously on the website and on the district website, but we do acknowledge that you know, some people may not have had the chance to see that advertisement. So we will acknowledge any additional comments. And these comments can be regarding the agenda or not regarding the agenda at this time. So because of that accommodation, we will only have one session for public comment. And you can, you will have your regular three minutes to speak up to a limit of 30 minutes for the total time period. And those are any additional comments that you did not get to send in prior to that. So do we have any additional comments at this time? If you do, you can raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have one from Ann Lewis. You can go ahead and take the mic.
Hello, my comments are very brief. I just wanted to add some counterbalance to some of the written comments regarding masking in the school district. I, our family has made a commitment to following the CDC guidelines. We're all fully vaccinated and boosted. We wear masks where we go. I believe that personal choice is definitely valid if your personal choice doesn't affect anybody else. My son's very best friend is immunocompromised. He cannot get vaccinated. And the vaccine, were he to be vaccinated, wouldn't work for him because his immune system. So I respect what the parents are saying, but other people's choices don't just impact themselves and their family. They impact myself, my family, and my extended family. So I just wanted to stand up, thank the board for putting this on the agenda and for having the wherewithal to have an open discussion about the safety and well-being of all of our kids.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comments that did not get the chance to send it in ahead of time? Most of you should have a hand raising feature. If not, you can always put it in the chat.
Heather Fernandez has her hand up.
Okay.
Yes, I, I understand about the mistletoe thing to get a hold of O'Neill or whatever you said in the Zupsek. But I would like to understand why these kids cannot go to VOTEC. And that was
I apologize. We did not, we did not cover that question. I apologize for that. Dr. Pasquarella, could you, have we received any updates on that?
Because these kids are losing, they don't even get a virtual option to go to VOTEC.
I just don't want to cut you off, Ms. Fernandez. Is that complete your question? And then I'll go ahead and try to answer that for you the best I can.
Okay, please.
Okay, so we did email the Department of Health and they advised that we do not send our students to the VOTEC at this given point.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and the only thing else I could say to that is I know that, you know, I'm not sure at this given point, I know it hasn't happened often. I don't know if the VOTEC would or would not consider you know, anything that would be able to be done online. I can't answer that as to why they would or would not do that at this given point, but I could surely, you know, try to look into that. I don't know if they'd be willing to do it or not.
Dr. Pasquarella, if you wouldn't mind, could you possibly look into that in the morning and see if they would offer a virtual component for our kids that can't attend?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mrs. Maraskin, I just want to address a couple of things on the CTC. In our health and safety plan at the CTC, if the Beaver County is in substantial or high COVID cases, we require all sending districts for their students to mask, regardless what the decision in their home school is. If we are in moderate or low, masking is optional. Again, it doesn't matter what decision their home district has made. In, prior to this evening, a few other school districts have also been closed down due to COVID cases. They have not sent their students over to the CTC. We currently do not offer a virtual component to the classes. Um, Dr. Pasquarella can contact Mr. White as tomorrow, but we, we currently don't, only because so much of it is hands-on.
Right. Well, thank you for providing that.
All right.
Thank you. Are there anybody else? Is there anybody else that did not get a chance to send in their comments ahead of time?
Desiree Conrad has her hand up.
Okay. You can take the mic.
Hi, good evening. I just had a question. Um, what is the reason that the meeting, the meeting tonight can't be held in person? Even though the high school is closed, like for, could it, could it be held in another building of another school? And who made that decision? Thanks.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. Obviously, this is a very last-minute decision to be made because of the closure very late last evening. We, we did discuss the option of holding it in another location. However, we just decided that it would probably reach more individuals in the public to be able to have it online. And with the fact that we were not able to get very much notice out to the public to let them know where that location would be and to rearrange their schedules to get to that location, because obviously we do have schools that are quite a bit of a distance apart. So, you know, people may make arrangements to be at the high school, but not maybe at, you know, necessarily at one of the elementary schools. So it certainly was something that we discussed and eventually determined that the best way to reach the public at this point with such short notice was to have it online. Are there any other comments that were not able to be sent in in advance? And this would be again to agenda or non-agenda items, so we will not be having the non-agenda portion at the end.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mueller.
You're welcome.
Moving on to committee reports, under Education and Technology, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Zachi, you can feel free to move forward with those items. If you want to split them, or if you, if just one of you want to speak, that'd be fine.
Mr. Zanki, would you like to hit the point of information this evening?
Sure. The board would like to recognize the dedication of all the staff and administrators who are doing their best to keep our kids safe, engaged, and in school. The time they are giving to our district will not and does not go unnoticed.
I also want to say thank you very much for all the time, the countless hours, the decision-making. There is no perfect answer. We're all trying our best. And the goal is to keep the buildings open and have the kids in school. Thank you to everybody for working so hard and diligently. Under our committee this evening, I'm going to make a motion to approve items 1 through 7 this evening.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Mrs. Romasco, would you like me to pull up the calendar at this time?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. So can you scroll all the, yeah, perfect. And then we'll just give everybody a second to, to look through that and then we'll move down to the second part. So just in a short summary, we will Mrs. Mueller, if you can move back up for one second, I'm sorry. The first day of school for students would be August 24th and the last day of school would be June 2nd. Is there any discussion on any of the items on the agenda? Mrs. Mueller, you can leave the, the calendar up there for a minute, just in case somebody didn't get a chance to see it that's on the meeting. If you don't mind. Okay, seeing no comments. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under finance and budget and building and grounds, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Keever. However, you would like to present that is fine.
Thanks, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Keever, are you okay with me, with the point of information?
Sure, we do have one point of information tonight. Um, the Amber Darius School Board and administration would like to recognize our maintenance department for their continued excellence in keeping our district facilities uh, safe and passable during this past snowstorm and throughout every winter season. Um, the district appreciates, appreciates uh, your hard work during all hours to keep our schools safe and open. So thanks to all the guys who are out moving a lot of snow these past few days.
Yeah, they did a great job. With that, I'd like to make motion to approve one through seven.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll wait till we get to the bottom. Okay. Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under athletics and public relations, Mr. Zachi and Ms. Fitzgo.
You want me to take it?
Sure, it's only one item there.
Great. I would like to move for the adoption of item number one this evening. Um, is there any discussion?
So Ms. Fitzgo made the motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under steering and roles in legislative, Mrs. Keough and Mrs. Fisher?
Um, I'm going to move for the adoption of items one through four, but I think we're going to have to take them one at a time for any discussion.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I don't know if you want to start with discussion on item number one.
So, sure, we can take discussion on item number one at this time.
Madam President, this is John Carpenter. I'd like to ask if there was any further discussion or resolution on uh, addressing families that may not, or, or children that may not be compliant while in the classroom masking.
Dr. Pascarella, would you like me to address that, or would you like to?
I believe the consensus of, you know, the discussion last week and, and sort of the recommendation would be that we would follow similar, similarly the protocols that we did in the past. If this were to happen where if students did not comply, we would ask them to comply after multiple prompts. Then, uh, for the most part, as long as we're respectful, we would ask them to, you know, go to a room and isolate. We would call the parent, encourage them to ask the child to mask. And as far as any exemptions, that would only come through the 504 process. Ultimately, I think that summarizes what I got the direction to be, mainly from last week's meeting in the public where we discussed operating similarly than what we did before.
Yes, I would agree to that. And again, of course, you know, this, this is on here in hopes that, you know, masking at four percent will alleviate what just happened to our middle school and our high school this week. Uh, the last thing that I think any of us want to see is our students not being in school in the building. And so this is just a way of trying to keep that from happening while still, if we are under that three percent mark, still allowing for parents to have their, you know, their personal choice for each of their students. So this is really sort of, and I'll just make a comment here. This is really just sort of a way of trying to meet in the middle and find a way to keep our kids in school while also, you know, uh, recognizing the fact that parents would like to still have their choice on whether their child is masked. Um, as long as our positive case numbers are not above four percent. And then once they get above four percent, children would be masked until our numbers fall below three percent. And just to be clear, that is per building, just so that everybody is aware. That's the only comment I would have to that. Any other discussion?
Um, Mrs. Ramasco, the only other comment I would make on that is that, um, hopefully it also helps keep our staff in the building so that we don't have too many, too many staff members out where we are on a shortage of teachers.
I would agree, Mrs. Keough. And the other thing too, I don't think we mentioned that we did see as a positive is that if, if we are masked, that should significantly reduce the contact tracing. So in that matter, if, you know, if two people are masked, then that, those contact tracing numbers would, would hopefully decrease uh, to the point where we would have more kids in the building. And again, just as you said, Mrs. Keough, more staff in the building.
And Mrs. Ramasco?
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I'm glad you brought that up, Mrs. Ramasco, because, um, I plan to vote yes on this tonight because of the amount of contact tracing that is occurring. Um, I can speak personally, my daughter has only been physically in the building eight days since December 13th due to tracing. Um, that it's absolutely not conducive to equality of education. There have been glitches online. There have been, you know, different things. The kids do not like it. Um, I believe that this is temporary. That is my plan. I want to revisit this as soon as we can in the future when the numbers drop and they stay low. Uh, my, my goal is to go back to optional as soon as possible. I just, but I will be voting yes this evening.
Mrs. Smith, I think that's a really valid point as well, that there, you know, is, there's definitely the opportunity that we can revisit this, you know, at any point when our numbers start to consistently stay below that mark. So this is not a forever thing. Who was next? Mrs. Fisher?
Thank you. I, I do. I, I just wanted to reiterate actually what, you know, Mrs. Smith touched on as well when we were both trying to get in. You know, the optimal decision here is to keep, to keep our kids in school for the, the utmost best education that we can give them. Um, while everybody's not in agreement, you know, publicly that, um, wearing a mask is, you know, is their choice. I think as a board collectively, you know, we're, we're trying to, to make the very best decision to, to keep these kids in school. And the emotional and physical and the mental, you know, the mental effects that it has on the kids all point to, um, them needing to be in school. So, um, I will be voting yes as well. I, I also do believe as, as Mrs. Smith said, revisiting it, you know, once the numbers do go down and taking it back to parent choice. But I think, you know, where we are right now in educating our kids and the time lost that we have had in the past with COVID um, really puts us where we are right now as, as this decision, decision comes before us. Thank you. And our staff as well, you know, keeping them, as Mrs. Keough said, there and, and, you know, able to be in the buildings and educating the kids is, again, of utmost importance, you know, and thank you to our staff. I would like to say that as well. I know it's been very difficult, you know, the contact tracing, um, kids in and out, teaching online. Um, I just personally would like to thank, to thank all of our staff um, for, for going the extra mile and, and putting in the extra time and, and doing exactly what we're here to do, what, which is to do what's best for the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
I just wanted to add it. I had a couple more questions too on it. If CDC um, requires, they've been playing around with their masking mandates suggesting either surgical KN95 or N95, is that, if that goes into effect? Or if they decide the CDC tends to be a little bit confused right now, it seems like. But if that were to be their recommendation, would we require those types of masks?
As far as where I stand right now, I think that's probably something that we would have to revisit as a board. I would imagine that if that were the case, we may have to, and Mrs. Turnbull, you may be better to answer this question, but I'm thinking that we may have to call a special board meeting at that point to possibly revisit. Um, I don't know, do you have anything that you would want to share on that question?
No, I, I mean, I think we certainly keep, continue to watch that as, as it evolves and, and try to look and see what there's some magic in, in the strength of the wording of recommendations. And, and right now CDC, I mean, they, they're largely recommending body for, for our purposes. The difficulty, of course, is that if, if in the, those quality masks are difficult to come by, first of all, and, and if, if we were to require it, I, I do think that we would need to have on hand a large number of those to just, to supply to those who weren't able to otherwise procure it for themselves. So even from, from that perspective, it's challenging. I know that there have been a number of schools as they look at that issue, um, have felt most comfortable strongly recommending. I mean, so the plan instead of saying, of requiring those level of mass provides information, education, recommendations to families so that, that people kind of understand, um, and are, that we try, help to transmit the best or to transmit the information that's being, you know, recommended by the CDC. But for us to independently mandate it for our students or staff is, has some challenges. We can continue to work through those and talk about them.
Okay, depending on if and how that would be worded.
Correct.
From the CDC, right? Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other discussion on number one?
Uh, Mrs. Ramasco, really, really quick, I just wanted to point out clarity uh, on why the four percent uh, is important. I don't know if the public knows this or not, but the health department actually makes the call at five percent for us to be recommended to shut down or not. Uh, and what you see here in point one is us utilizing all the tools in our toolbox to try to, uh, prevent that. So I just wanted to make that point because, you know, some folks may have questions of, well, why this percent rather than that percent if we're going to mask or not? Uh, the goal here is to stay below five percent. So we don't have to, you know, go through what we just went through.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Seifus. That was very helpful.
I just had, yes, I just had one other comment. If the board is done making their comments, um, I would just like to encourage you. I don't really think I defer to the solicitor on this. If we have to amend the motion, I don't think we do. But my recommendation would be if, in fact, this were to go through uh, tonight, that we would start this probably on Monday or Tuesday, just to make sure that we get notification that we would, you know, be able to, to prepare people for that and that they could get, they could get the updated information and put in. We need a start date looking fourteen days back. So I would encourage you to consider Monday or Tuesday.
Mrs. Turnbull, do we need to have a, an amendment to that motion to state that, or can we just?
I, I think, I, I think a direction to, um, to the administration, if and when any of these components are passes is probably sufficient. Um, your health and safety plan will be updated as of the, as of the time of your action. And then the implementation, I think largely under your plan, you, you pass on to your administration to, to do, um, in, in a meaningful and a thoughtful way. So.
Okay, thank you.
As per Dr. Pascarella's comment, do we have any of our currently open buildings close or at four percent?
I could answer that, Mr. Keever.
Thank you, Mr. Keough.
The Highland is, is approaching, it, it's about three percent and the other two buildings are not even close. But, um, you know, every day case numbers drop off, but so the only two schools that are really ever in question are the middle school and the high school. And for example, the high school would have lost six cases today. They gained one, lost six. So, um, you know, by the time that this, um, the, the students would be back in school, um, the numbers are going to drop off significantly. And, um, but like I said, you, you know, after a week, you don't, you don't know where we'll be. So if we hit that four percent, then, then they would become masked again.
So that would just be kind of my point in regards to that. I mean, it might seem like a short amount of time till Monday or Tuesday, but a lot can happen either way uh, in that. So it would be difficult to answer, but I think what you're hearing is the three buildings that are remaining opening right now, I mean, you know, they're a little ways from four percent according to Mr. King. But, you know, you have some time in between then and there, uh, obviously to, to see where the numbers at. I just think we need a date for everyone to say this is when we're, we're starting. For any building, obviously, that would be open. And I would think if you, if you did it on Monday or Tuesday, would start the following day, we would send them, you know, the blast out.
Okay. I think that the date would probably also go along with number two. So I don't know if we want to wait until after all four are voted on and then we can decide on a date. If that's okay with everybody else. Any other discussion on number one? Okay, we, I do believe need a second to that motion that Mrs. Keough made.
Second.
Second.
Well, I thought we're going to discuss the other three.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Turnbull, do we need to vote per item because we're discussing per item, or can we discuss all four? And then just take a vote?
No, I think the cleanest thing is to get a second on all four and then it, and then we can keep on talking one by one. That, that truly moves all four of those items into a discussion phase. So.
Okay.
If we can.
And then we would vote, and then we would vote on all four after all of the discussion has been done.
I think that, that's perfectly fine and acceptable.
Okay. So, Mrs. Keough, do you want to proceed with number two?
Okay, number two is the creation of the dashboard. And, um, it's basically just going to, every day by three o'clock, you, every building will have the rolling fourteen day numbers. It's probably a good thing so that parents can keep abreast of just how close we are. So, you know, making sure that i- if we're relatively close to that, that they know that, you know, their child is going to have to mask that day. So I, I, I don't see any issues with that personally. I think it's just another tool for parents to be able to keep, you know, their eye on the number of positive cases.
Thank you, Mrs. Keough. So you're making a motion for number two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Mrs. Ramasco, I did have, just for clarification for the public, are, are we continuing or will we continue to do that six o'clock telephone call as well, just in case we have guardian, parents or guardians that aren't able to access the dashboard?
I believe the, the goal was to just have the dashboard that would be accessible. Um, but we can have some discussion on that. That can be included in our discussion. Before we get to that, though, can we have a second for number two?
Oh, I'll.
Okay, I, I couldn't tell if somebody said yes or not.
My apologies for breaking in. I just didn't want to.
No, you're fine.
In case any of the board members had something to add.
It's really hard to, to virtually know who's speaking and when. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Anybody else have any comments on, on number two in addition to? Anybody else have any comments on on number two in addition to um, Mrs. Fisher's comment about the phone calls as well?
I do, Madam President, just one one comment. Is that I just want to make sure that it's clear for the public that this would be looking at all positive cases. Uh, that occur in the fourteen day rolling window. Uh, when considering closure and calling the health department. That is looking for all those positive cases who were symptomatic in the building. So I just want to make sure that we indicate the clarification to the community and the parents so that. They understand this definitely is a clear dashboard, and I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, based upon the motion above so that people could clearly see how close they are to. Uh, requiring masking based upon the percentages. However, I just want to clarify that. You know, this will include all positive COVID cases, even if they were not symptomatic. So the reason why I bring that up is. That number may rise a little bit higher, uh, which I think goes to the board's point of trying to be conservative and not risk the chance of. Of closure, but I just want to make sure from the public's point of view so that they understand that. At least as it stands right now, only sys sys symptomatic, excuse me, cases would count. Uh, when we're calling the health department for closure. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So then, just in addition to that, so when we are looking at the dashboard. You know, we may, so we will, if if number one passes, we would then be masking at four percent of what the dashboard is telling us. But when the dashboard gets to five percent, that may or may not. Um. Warrant a a shutdown from the health department, so. That would actually come out in the same way in which it came out last evening, if I'm correct, Dr. Pascharella, where, you know, we would be waiting for. Your, you know, the email from the district to say that we are shut down and not going based on the five percent that's showing on the dashboard. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on number two?
When the blast goes out, will we send exactly where it is on the website, a link directly to it, at least the first time? When the initial memo goes out.
If I'm wrong, Dr. Pascharella or Mr. King, you can correct me. Um, I believe that this dashboard would be on the front of the main page. Along with where the health and safety plan is now posted as well. Is that correct?
I think that's a good suggestion that we would just place it on the main page. I think that's a, that's a good suggestion. I mean, at this given point, I. I think it's a priority that we could try to fit on the main page. I'll. You know, need to work with Mrs. Heim to make sure that, you know, that is in fact feasible, which I'm can't see why it wouldn't be.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President, is there any uh expense structure to in? Back to Kathy's question of keeping the phone call in play. Is there any reduction of expense if that call is eliminated? Or is is there any downside for that call to stay in play? For somebody who may not have a direct connect. To that. Dashboard.
Mr. King, do you have any thoughts on that in particular?
Do you what? And the question is, is there any? Negative or like anything negative about that call being made at six o'clock?
I is there any, are we saving anything by not doing it?
I don't think that actually sending out. I'm trying to think of how your bridge or blast works, but I believe that it's a flat rate and we own the system. I don't believe that sending out the blast would cost us anything. And actually, I know a lot of people. That actually, you know, that they they'll actually call me, especially teachers, and they'll they'll look at the case count and be like. Be like, okay, where are you at? And then I'm like, you know, they kind of um, they'll they'll check the numbers on it. And then I'm like, well, these are all positive cases. A lot of the, some of these kids are virtual. Um, and so that's why your case count wouldn't, you know, match mine as far as, you know, the forty going to shut down. So with that being said, I don't. See anything negative about going out, except if people just, you know. The the one negative thing that we were running into when we were sending it out all the time is people weren't listening to the bridge or blasts. Because they were getting inundated with calls.
That's right.
So I would get those types of complaints, but I don't see anything negative about sending it out. Like, I don't think it's like like cost wise or anything or anything else. So I think it's more of a a thing where you don't want to inundate people with bridge or blast, just as the simple fact that you want to, you want to listen to them. I mean. I think that's the only negative part of sending them out all the time, if that makes any sense to you.
My only co-comment on that, I'm sorry, is just that. Uh, I think if you are going to continue to have it sent out, I think the time should match. Um. My concern would be, you you know, you're updating a dashboard, making a decision at three o'clock, and then you're sending a blast out at six o'clock. And if we added a couple more, it would almost be like, well, then why aren't we masking this? There's different cutoff dates, so that was kind of my concern with it. Um.
I would, I would agree to that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're good. I just real quick, I would agree with that as well. Um, the only thing I would say is. My concern with having a phone call three is that are all not all of our students, most of them should be, no. A lot of them will not be off the bus by then, so my only concern would be that if there is a call. Coming from the district that is about a student who is either at the school or on their way home from school. You know, that that three P M. Time. If we're going to do a call, I would suggest also that they be at the same time, but that we change that three P M. To a later time when we know that all students are home and safe.
I just saw Lori messaged messaged us and she said that um. You know, that it's a flat fee and that it wouldn't cost, it doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah, I guess my my. I'm sorry, I I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, it's my fault.
My only comment to that is it it could be still sent at six. I'm just saying the cutoff on the calls should be at three. Meaning that. If you still want to program the call to go out at six, to make sure that it doesn't interfere. That is fine, but our cutoff for both is three. In other words, if we get one at three thirty or four or five, it rolls to the next day. Both for the email and phone call blast and for the dashboard, that that's. She could set that when she leaves right there at three o'clock, we change the the dashboard. And she sends the blast out and it doesn't have to ring till six o'clock, if that makes any sense.
Would anybody be opposed to just changing that to six o'clock? Across the board? If we want to still keep that phone call.
Mrs. I just think that I I would say something to that. I did it again. Go ahead, Mrs. Fisher.
I just wanted to clarify for John, so he and the reason I brought it up is I was just thinking, I thought, you know, we have um, students that go. You know, or stay with grandparents or elderly in the community. That was, I don't, I don't mind either way what we decide if if we just do the dashboard or a phone call, but. I was trying to anticipate in case we were to receive calls, you know, some people aren't aren't on, you know, line as. Some of the younger generation, and that was my only question in regards to as to why I was asking, just to clarify, you know, the question. Thanks, and I'll. You know.
Thank you for that. I I think the combination of those two make a strong. Communication. I I think that's that's a strong point.
And I would just say that I would keep my recommendation to you. I understand what you're saying is. But I I even if the blast still continues to go out at six, that you leave the cutoff time at three. And I say that because, in fact, for the same reason you're saying people aren't home, many of our employees are still able to get a hold of to make sure we get. An accurate number. After that, getting a hold of people, you know. Sure, Mr. King and I and Miss Heim, we're. We're doing that till whenever you would like us to, but if we had to call and double check numbers or get a hold of people, I think. My recommendation is you stick with the three o'clock time right around the end of the day. You know, high school's over, elementary's almost over, then you update your dashboard at that given point and you ask Mrs. Heim and the technology department to send the. Blast out with wherever we're at there, but not to ring till six. That that would be my recommendation.
I think that's reasonable. Any but any other discussion on that item? So just to clarify, the the dashboard would be updated at three, the call would go out at six, and that would be based on the three o'clock numbers. Okay. Numbers, Mrs. Key, do you want to proceed with number three?
Yes, um, and I already did make the motion for three and four. Um, and number three is the water fountains, and I know we had this discussion. When we met with the health and safety uh plan. I personally. Am not in favor of opening up the water fountains. We do have water bottle filling stations. If you've ever watched people at the water fountain, everybody's either got to touch either the handle or the button. And then when our mouths are open, drinking water, then water splashing back over the spout. And then the next person's coming and drinking out of there. I think, I mean, other districts. Are doing the same thing with the water filling stations. You just have to be a little bit diligent with remembering to put your child's water bottle. In the backpack. I mean, most of these kids are playing sports or something. Where they have to have a water bottle. And by now, I think everybody should be in the groove of. Taking a water bottle, packing the water bottle. I know we talked about having some extra cups in school for, you know, children that forgot their water bottles. But. I think that's a germ spreader. That's my personal opinion.
I would agree, Mrs. Kehoe, just just so that we're doing this properly, since you made the motion, is there a second?
Back in.
Okay. So then. I'll just comment to your point, Mrs. Kehoe. I I would agree as well. I think that it's. Kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish, but I do also obviously understand the need for. For students to stay hydrated during the school day, so as long as we are keeping those filling stations um and providing cups and. You know, of course, we would ask the the community as much as possible to send in those water bottles. Um, that's kind of my thoughts on that as well. Anybody else have any comments or discussion?
I do, Mrs. Ramaska. I my concern was there just for, you know, the kids that maybe don't have a water bottle or. Uh, we will have cups available, but um, I agree that it's it's a. Area of concern for the, you know, the germ spreading, but I I was concerned to also to keep the kids hydrated and if somebody doesn't have a water bottle, just so. Cause I I believe that was brought up in our health and safety meeting as well from one of the administrators that they were running out of um. The water bottles. Um, and that was one of my concerns, just so we're able to keep, you know, keep the children hydrated if they don't bring something from home. Thank you.
I had a question. Do we have water fill stations in the elementary schools? I know we have them in the middle school and high school.
So I just received a text, Highland does not have them, Dr. Paschere. I don't, I don't know.
I just got a text from a teacher at State Street.
Me too, me me too.
So actually, as far as I am, as far as I'm aware, the elementary schools do not have filling stations. Um, Dr. Pascharella, I think that's something we definitely can look into getting. For the elementary schools. I don't know if you have any other comments for as far as that goes.
Aren't there things in other classrooms?
Yes.
I I I got an idea, um, because I I do understand both sides, right? It's very difficult to try to mitigate the the spread of of COVID when you have, you know, kids touching in and around the waterfall and. Drinking from it, etc. I get that, but also understand that it's tough for parents to, uh, you know, go buy cups, make sure they have the cups, replace the cups, all this, that and the other. So maybe we marry uh, item three with the percentages of uh, of of item one, meaning. Hey, they stay open if we're below three percent. Once we creep up to above three or four percent, we shut them down. Um, to help again to prevent the schools from shutting down, so. You you know, that could be one way to meet in the middle there, because I I I understand and 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 get both sides of it, but if our numbers are low. I don't see necessarily keeping the fountains closed. Uh, you know, what what will help the situation, but if they're rising, then you shut them down is another tool. To try to keep the numbers below that, you know, shutdown number of five percent.
Any other comments or discussion on that?
I would disagree with that specifically. If the numbers are low, you want to keep them low, keep the fountains off. My opinion.
I think too, you know. A lot of us have been looking into, you know, additional ways to receive possible donations of filling stations. Um. You know, what maybe an increase in the water bottles that are being provided. I know there were some donations that came in at the beginning of the year, and I believe, especially you're right, that those have started to run out in a lot of the buildings. And then, of course, the elementary buildings do not have the filling station, so I think, you know, we can continue to look into solutions to try to get. More filling stations, at least for the elementary, um, and possibly some additional at the the middle and high school. Um, just in some form, and then look into more donations of water bottles to help that.
Mrs. Ramaska, I I was getting a couple texts too that, you know, the uh, staff members, they are buying their own cups. And that gets costly for them as well. I think that's another, you know, another concern for us to look at that, you know, they're buying their own.
Yeah. So we can definitely look into. Making sure that they're all provided with the cups that they need as well. For the students that don't have the water bottles.
I also applied for a donation for a company that partners with school to provide water bottles for lower income communities. Um, I will. Update you whenever I get something on that.
Thanks. Yeah, Mrs. Fitzgo, thank you very much. I think I think I did one as well, so I I believe they were two different ones. We'll have to hopefully make sure that that's correct, but. We should be getting answers on two of those, so we'll see.
My only other comment is, and I know they used to do this, I don't know if they still do, but McDonald's used to donate cups.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we can reach out to them.
Yeah, the cups sound to be the most urgent part of it. If we're running out of cups and teachers are having to purchase the cups, then. Definitely getting those provided first. I would think. Any other discussion on number three?
Um, if we were to open them, if this goes through. Um, someone had brought up in the health and safety meeting about getting them flushed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I didn't, I assume that would happen, but it's not good to assume, so I just wanted to bring that up and see if that was what would happen if this. Would pass.
Yes, that would, um, yes, we would make sure that the maintenance department, you know, turn them on appropriately and flush them. Necessary. Well, they would do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another quick question. If we do vote to turn them on, would that also include the middle school and high school when they come back from being shut down? Would they be on?
As it's as it's written, yes. Any other questions or discussion? On number three?
Okay, so we need a second on number four for the quarantine and isolation. Following the CDC recommendations for quarantine and isolation.
Can I have a second for number four?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, just to clarify, we've been following CDC uh quarantine and isolation guidelines. Um. I had people in the community reach out and ask me why we would change it now and. Um. From my understanding, it's just because of the way they keep updating. It makes more sense just to write CDC COVID guidelines. Versus um, changing the literature. So just to be um. A little more transparent with that, so everyone understands.
Yeah, I'd make a comment on that, too. I think a lot of that dealt with our health and safety plan, and when we did develop. And at the top of that plan, kind of in indicate that we would follow those recommendations, which I think kind of. Supereded anything below it, but in one section, it talked about when the plan was implemented, the quarantine and isolation. Um. Rules and regulations in there, which I felt we were still okay with because of that line above. However, at this given point, I think we would eliminate that that dated language and just put this in, because as I've said in multiple meetings now. It seems to me like these consistently change.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion on number four? Okay. Can we have a roll call on number one through four? Mrs. Mueller?
Sorry, I was muted. Okay.
That's okay.
Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, yes, on two and four. No. No, on one and three.
Mr. Seifus?
Uh, yes, on one, two and four. I, I, I want to abstain from three because I like to, you know, see that amended, in my opinion.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, on one, two and four, and I would also like to look a little further into the water fountain situation because that is concerning. For me as well, so I will say no on three.
Hey, uh, Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes, to one, two and four, no to number three. Also interested in amendment on that one.
Mr. Keber?
Um, no on number one, yes on number two, yes on number three. I'm gonna abstain on number four because I think it's redundant. We follow, um, Pennsylvania's State Department of Health Guidelines, which follows CDC.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes, on number one, number two and number four, no on number three.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes, on one. Yes, on two, no on three. And I'm also choosing to abstain on four.
Mr. Zachi?
No, on one and three, yes, two and four.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes, on one, two and four, no on three.
So it looks like items one, two and four carry, item three fails.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller. Under personnel and salary, salary schedule and labor relations, Mr. Seifus and Mrs. Smith. Mr. Seifus, do you want to take those items?
Yeah, no, no problem, uh. Is she able to scroll down a little bit? I could switch over.
Sorry, but, oh, sorry about that.
No worries. All right, uh, it's recommended approve or for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two musical staffing, uh, we just read these out, Mrs. Ramasco?
You can, sure.
Okay.
Or actually, I believe these were the. Mrs. Turnbull, can you confirm, we, we had these last week already read, right? He just needs to make a motion for one through four.
I believe so. I don't, I don't believe that there are any new additions, so. Mr. Seifus, you're, you're welcome to either move for, um. For these items altogether, which would be, you know, you would move for items one through. Let me find mine as well, um. What was that number? One through four as presented, or if you would like to, to just kind of. Items one and then describe it, item two, describe it. You're, you're welcome to do it either way that you wish.
Gotcha, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Start with, I, I like to move, uh, for one through four. Take a roll call there?
I have a second.
I'll second.
I was second.
That's a lot.
Of course.
It was the first discussion. Who was the first one to second?
I am actually not sure.
Me.
Mrs. Smith?
Mrs. Smith.
Okay.
Sounds like that's the consensus. Do we have any discussion on items one through four? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Yes, absolutely.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mr. Keber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, under president's address, I just have a couple of quick things. Um, just thank you to all the students and families for their understanding cooper- cooperation with today's, um, school shutdowns. I think I can speak for the entire board in saying it's something that we have been working very hard. Um, along with the administrators and, and the teachers and the staff and everybody, um, to avoid and hope that this new. Um, data-driven approach to, uh, masking at that four percent level per building. Will hopefully avoid those future school closings, um, but, you know, just thank you for, for the understanding that. That students and families gave today. Also, as I said earlier, just as a reminder, the winter formal has been rescheduled for January twenty ninth. Um. You will know, you guys will notice too on tonight's agenda, just in case you were not at last, last week's meeting. That the board committees have, have been restructured, so there are five committees now. And they will be working committees that, uh, two board, two board members will sit as chairpeople on. And then we will be having public meetings, um, with a committee. Most likely starting in February, um, for most of these committees, not all, but most of them will probably start sometime around February. Um, we will be reaching out to anybody who expressed an interest in the survey, uh, being a part of the committees. Also, the Hall of Honor Committee will be sending out applications, um, for nominees in February as well, so please keep an eye on the website for that information. And then, thank you very much, um, from all of us, for everybody who took the time to fill out the surveys. It was very, very helpful. Um, we had a four hundred and eighty-nine parents and a hundred and thirteen teachers respond, so that was a, a really great response. And we are taking a very close look at those results and we will present a summary of that data at the February meeting. That's all I had. Um, Mrs. Turnbull, would you mind? Giving your report under the social service report?
Okay. Sure, I just, as one informational item, um, the Providence Charter West hearing, um, began last week. Um, that will continue in all likelihood at the, um, at our workshop meeting immediately prior to our workshop meeting. Information about that time, um, will be posted on, on the district website. Um, and, and shared with the board once that date, once that time is confirmed. And that's all I have this evening for you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pascharella, under the superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you. Now, first of all, just wanted to give a update, um, on the metal detectors from the last voting meeting. We did.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, sure, we did place the order and they are anticipated to come in. I mean, all, obviously with, with shortages, you never know, but they're anticipated to come in in the near future. And they were, were looking at somewhere towards the end of the month at the latest, so we're hopeful that that will happen. And, uh, once those come in, then we would get those in the administration at the middle school's hands. And allow them to start to talk with staff about how those would be implemented, excuse me, as soon as possible. Questions on that?
No, thank you for that update.
Yeah, I have a question. Are, are we training staff prior to them coming in, or are we waiting to those come in to do that?
Given point, my, my theory is because the exact model at the high school was not, um. It's no longer made, so we got a similar model. My theory would be that you, you have that come in and there might be some slight. Try to review those and then from there, um, if they need to, if the administration, the middle school administration feels that. They need to get some folks to go up and take a look at the high school and how that's done. Then we would try to do our best to make that work, but. I prefer that they would, I guess, just check out the, the equipment, um, first to see that. Pros and cons on, on how well that matches and that might help guide what they do in their procedural. Um, process, if that makes sense.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I know there were some, um, discussion last week, how many units did we end up buying?
We did end up buying three units. We were able to get three units.
Thank you.
So that was what was, so I will make a, a note down and, uh, full, um, training well on the metal detectors. Uh, the, the model was very similar, as I understand it, not being an expert, but they don't make the exact one. Um, you know, pretty similar, but the, the model we were able to get then was able to get three, three units.
Thank you for that.
Sure. The other thing I did also wanted to, to reiterate, thank you to our staff or, you know, both. Both our support staff, you know, custodial staff, our teaching staff, administration. Our parents and students for being flexible. I know how difficult these times are. And I know that, you know, it's not for many people, their first choice, uh, remote learning and going virtual. But again, we're doing our very best in these, in the situation to provide the best education we possibly can, so. Thank you to all involved, uh, it's a difficult time. People are obviously under a lot of stress and, and they're challenged in these times, so. I can't thank you enough for everything that you're doing to help make sure our students continue to grow and learn. And everything that, that the entire community is doing for the district. So thank you to all those. So finally, um, I, I didn't want, and I think talked a little bit about that being rescheduled, but this is school board appreciation month. So I'd like to just read a little statement about, about the board here. And, um, obviously we'll do a little bit more next month when we're able to meet hopefully in person. Um, our school board members spend long hours working to ensure all of our students have the opportunity to learn and grow. They serve as a link between the community and the classroom and their leadership is key to success in our school community. Celebrating school board reconnect, recognition month is one way to say thank you to all of you for all you do. Know that we appreciate you, our school board members and your contributions, not only in the month of January, but your role. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the school district. It's greatly appreciated on behalf of myself, the administration, staff and students and community. Thank you very much and we hope to be able to recognize you a little bit more, uh, you know, next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so with, um, all of the comments being taken at the beginning of the meeting, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? I believe that was Mr. Zachi?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Thank you, everybody, for attending and being flexible with the virtual meeting this evening. I hope you have a nice evening, evening.
Night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.